All right.
I'm just waiting on the light. My call to order the regular city commission meeting for June 7, 2021. Roll call, please.
Mayor Yance, Commissioner Guthrie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Badway.
Here.
And Commissioner Wilkinson.
Present.
Invocation, Major Eric Johnson with Salvation Army this evening.
Gracious Father, we come before you in thank for the blessings you bestowed upon us community here with wisdom of the leaders. We ask you to guide us through this meeting tonight, decisions that are being made. Grant the leaders the wisdom that they need to make the right ones. We thank you in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Y'all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have a proclamation and recognition of Jerry Clark, who together with the crew of our inmates that help us out, there's a substantial list of things, I'm not going to read them all, but they do a lot of work at the playgrounds, built the gazebos at the North Main Water Park and the new sewer plant, and they've done work at MAC Stadium and participated in numerous activities, Prairie Port and Frontier, Western, Governor's One Shot Turkey Hunt, they painted the 4-H building, is do all kinds of things for us, and we have a certificate of appreciation, I'm going to read it, and then Vice Mayor Lewis will present it, and says, "The City of El Dorado, Kansas extends our sincerest gratitude for the work that Jerry Clark and his crews have done over the many years of his career with the El Dorado Correctional Facility. We bestow this certificate of appreciation upon him in recognition of his many contributions to the betterment of our community." Next item on the agenda, agenda item number six, is a personal appearance from Taya Khan, who's the director of the Butler County Oil Museum.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to come before you this evening, just to give you a huge thank you from the Butler County Historical Society and the Kansas Oil Museum for helping us get the new electric sign out front. That's just been huge for us, especially where we have been exposed to COVID, that was our way that we could communicate to the outside world. And I know that there's a time limit, so I will talk fast, to tell you some of the things that we have going on down there right now. If you've noticed when you go by, we have the 150th logo for the celebration coming up, to let everyone know that we're going to be participating right along with you. We're excited. We're back fully open, we've had a successful rock fest, and we're just excited to be back up and ready. We have been designated a community travel information center by the State of Kansas, so we're now on the website and the maps, and we're hoping that that will bring more tourism dollars here to El Dorado and of course to our museum, so we're being proactive in that way. We were highlighted in USA Today's Things to Do in the Midwest Edition, so we're excited about that and hope to, again, bring more people in and all be enjoying that sign. Our historic documentaries, which started when we were selected by Humanities Kansas and the Smithsonian as a partnership, which was to be an in-house exhibit, which is now open, by the way, come on down and see it, had to turn to an online exhibit, and we never in our wildest imagination thought it would have such an overwhelming acceptance as an online, and we've had about 25,000 views since the first of the year for our Facebook and our YouTube channel. It's such wildly accepted on YouTube that they are now monetizing it, and YouTube is selling ads on the Butler County Historical Society page. Who would think that would happen? So, it's been shared so many times and so many articles about it now, that PBS has reached out to us, and we are now working on and will be filming an 11-week television series that the museum is putting together that will start airing on PBS on July 8. So, it will be promoting Butler County specifically, starting out with U.S. in El Dorado. So, we're very, very proud of that, and it's for a small staff, one full-time, two part-time, two part-time summer staff, and one consultant. We're really excited about that. We're working, of course, with alliances and sponsors, that's another day, that's another presentation. If you're interested, I will gladly be back, but you can tell that we're staying very busy trying to drum up business for the museum and El Dorado and get those tourism dollars into both of our pockets. So, we're just very excited about that coming our way. So, thank you again for working with us, getting our beautiful sign up, and we just look forward to working with you in the future. So, if I may answer any questions, I gladly will, but thank you again.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Persons who wish to address the city commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the city commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Any presentation is for information purposes only, no action will be taken. Does anyone wish to make a public comment this evening? Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There's three items, approval of the city commission minutes from the May 17, 2021 meeting, approval of appropriation ordinance number 0521, the amount of $1,384,286.05, and approval of the FAA Airport Coronavirus Response Grant Agreement. Do I have a motion?
I move the consent agenda to be approved as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, or any further discussion? All in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, four zero. Old business, we have none, new business, agenda item number 13, assessment, and hold a public hearing for Project 533, Oil Hill Rocky Road. I assume Scott will talk about this.
Yes, Commissioner, this evening, we are holding that public hearing to spread the special assessments for the extension of Oil Hill Road and the paving of Rocky Road out in the north end of the El Dorado industrial park. This was a project that was started a few years back, at the request of BG during their The final cost of the project came in at $558,131.00. Of that, the improvement district assessment is at $385,110.39, and the city at large cost for the project is $173,020.61. There are two property owners within the improvement district, one is Grizzly Development, which owns the property on the east side of Oil Hill Road, and then we have BG Products that owns property on the west side of Oil Hill Road and the southeast-westernly side of Rocky Road.
Okay, so now we need to open the public hearing. So, at this time, we'll open the public hearing, does anyone wish to speak to this agenda item? If not, we'll close the public hearing.
I would like to share, I didn't receive a phone call today from Grizzly Development, just sharing their concern with the assessment on undeveloped property. I talked through the process of establishment of the improvement district and the project, and they just wanted that concern to be known. Their assessment for the project is $128,000-ish.
Over 20 years?
Over 20.
Okay. The project's complete.
No protests or anything, just one.
Okay, but the project's complete, right? Okay.
And was Grizzly Development part of the beginning of that project? I mean, weren't they?
They were part of it from the beginning, the project was petitioned by BG Products.
But they were, I mean, we.
They were the drivers of the project.
But Grizzly was also part of that.
The discussions.
The discussions and what would work best for them, and I mean, we had, I've been hearing Grizzly Development this whole time, so I'm just a little surprised that now we're hearing something negative out of them.
It was just a concern, so.
Okay.
They shared that they deal with a lot of developments all over the region, and just wanted to understand the process, how the city of El Dorado does it, because it's different everywhere.
Okay. Thank you.
And I told them I would share that.
Okay. So, to proceed with the assessments, we need a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number G-1353, levying special assessments on certain property to pay the cost of internal improvements in the City of El Dorado, Kansas, as previously authorized by Resolution Number 2857 of the City, and providing for the collection of such assessments.
Second it. We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, four zero. Agenda item 14, public hearing for Project 542 Douglas Road.
Yes, Commissioner, this was the improvement of Douglas Road from Juana Avenue to South Coast Traffic Way. That project is complete. Tonight, we're holding that public hearing to consider spreading the assessments. The final project cost came in at $1,494,113.27. Of that, $591,668.08 is the improvement district's cost, so the owners logged the project, and the remaining $817,745.19, it's the city at large cost. Those costs cover storm sewer that's within the road.
Intersections.
Intersections, correct.
Okay.
And cost came in below estimates, and assessments, as the property owners were originally notified, all assessments are below that.
Very good, very good. Well, it sure is nice driving down Douglas Road.
It really is.
Absolutely. So, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak, step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Ellen Metler, Leslie Metler. We're on 1221 Ellit. Our property butts up to Douglas. One of the only properties on that street does not have a driveway. That was fixed or anything with that extension of the road, if anything, property life must be taken, so we're, our proposed assessment is $3,542.26, that's going to be collected in 20 annual installments at a rate prescribed by the KSA, which is 5.5%. I'm a math teacher, so that's compounded interest over 20 years, $3,000, which is more than we pay in property taxes per year right now. That amount, the fact that we, as property owners, are paying more than the city to fix the road that was put in disrepair by the city, doesn't seem like something that we want to do as property owners and the neighborhood. There's been houses torn out on that street, and so even though the road has been extended and has been fixed, like I said, we don't actually have a driveway on that road, so nothing as far as our property was improved. Like I said, property was taken from us when the street was expanded and improved upon. But basically, if we pay that 20 annual installments, which is more than our property taxes currently, we're going to end up paying around probably $7,000 to $8,000 over that 20 years, and.
How, pay how much?
Seven to eight with the interest.
Okay. And what was the rate you recorded?
5.5% from the KSA that I looked at.
That sounds kind of high to me.
It will be, it'll be what we sell the bonds at, at the time, so data that you've heard of.
If it brings anything from two and a half to probably 3%, is what bonds are selling for.
And we'll go to bond sale.
This fall.
So, I'd be very surprised if, if they were in the 5% range.
Okay, well, that's what it said, maximum rate there, of course.
So, that's the maximum by law, but it's, it's whatever the market rate is at the time of the bond sale, I believe.
Part of that statute may be a fee, because there's a 5% fee that the city can tack on, outside of an interest charge, that may be it.
Right, but we still haven't had a driveway in Grubinmont, we didn't have any of that done to our specific property, so we're wondering the process of how that was assessed and valued.
Does your property butt up to Douglas?
Yeah, but we're one of the only ones on Ellit that doesn't have a driveway on that street. We just have a fence line.
So, similar in nature, where we look at adjacent projects in the past, we go half the distance to the next intersection of the street. So, you'll have some folks here this evening that live on Finney that don't face or even have property that touches Douglas Road, but they were part of the improvement district.
Everybody pays for two streets, everybody. For, if it's an improved street, which Douglas was not, because there was no curb and gutter there, and, and you only pay for it once, so once it's in, the city will pick up all the maintenance forever.
Right, the cities, the numbers you quoted, the city's cost is less than us. You said it was over a million and the.
The total is 1.4 million.
The city's cost was over 8,000.
Okay, so our cost is 500?
The improvement district, so the owners of property within the Grubin district, final cost was 591,668 and change. That total cost is divided amongst all the square footages within the improvement district, and we come up with a cost per square foot. So, these properties that have driveways, their driveway cost is added on top of that cost per square foot. Since you guys don't have a driveway, there's no cost for driveway anymore, you're just paying for the improvement of the road.
Right, we didn't vote yes on that improvement, though.
So, yeah, in 2018.
I wasn't even living here in 2018.
So, in, in 2018, the commission held a similar public hearing as they did tonight. We had an informational meeting as well, with the property owners talking about the project and the process, and it sounds like it wasn't divulged to you in transactional.
No, I was not living in El Dorado at that time even, so now I'm responsible for costs that I didn't approve.
Yeah, so it was a majority, majority commission voted to proceed with the improvement.
Yeah, we voted it in.
Okay.
And, and just, so, so a little bit of history for you, the road had been on the agenda, not in front of us, but in commission's pass, and the neighborhood had petitioned out of it.
Right.
Multiple times, saying, "No, we don't want this."
We can't afford it.
Okay, well, I mean, and, and, and at that point, it's, it came up in front of us in 18, and we decided that it is a targeted street that needs to get redone.
Yeah.
That your, your, the improvement district did not present a petition, there were, there were people that weren't, weren't for it, but it was not overturned in petition, so we determined that it needed to be done, and so.
And so, we still have to foot the bill.
Correct.
Of $3,542.26.
As of this point, yes.
In 20 annual installments, so basically for the lifetime that we own that house.
So, it'd be your total assessment, you see there, that 3,000, whatever you quoted, divided over 20 years.
Right, with interest.
With interest, correct. And if interest is of concern of anyone, they could pay upfront total, they could pay a larger chunk.
I guarantee no one on that street can pay upfront total.
I'm just sharing, because the conversation brought up, there may be some others that have that question and concern about interest, but a larger chunk could be paid for, a few years in, it can be paid off on the remaining principal amounts. We're pretty flexible with individuals.
And what happens if I refuse to pay because I didn't approve this project?
So, if it goes more than three years, it would go to the Butler County Sheriff for delinquent taxes, potentially via for Sheriff's sale.
Well, that's my main point, I didn't ask for this, and now I have to pay for it. We have a baby on the way, and that amount is not looking great to us right now. So, that was the point I wanted to make, with the interest and the amount, like I said, this amount is more than we pay in property taxes. I guarantee nobody on that street has, well, we saw some of our neighbors do, their assessment is minus $6,000 because of the driveway. I guarantee nobody on that street has that kind of money to fork out right away. We're not exactly, they're wealthy as part of El Dorado, so that was all I wanted to say.
I have a question, though. So, we are part of the improvement.
District.
District, okay. How about you improve the south side of my, of my property? I would love for all, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, all of you, please, drive by 1221 Ellit, and you will see an RV, it's the size of this damn room, it's been parked inside of our, ugh, it's not, and not, I'm so embarrassed, because I'm very bad at little speaking, not lying.
You're doing great.
It's a junkyard.
It is a junkyard, and like, south of us is a junkyard, there's the, they, they, they hid their property by doing a black, like, basically, you put black trash bags, and you put it all around their fence, and so, they didn't do a, they didn't.
Actually, sir, sir, one, one, one second, isn't that on, isn't that on what you're talking about? I, I actually had a conversation with our code enforcement person two or three weeks ago. I know, and I understand, and, and you, what you, what you'd understand is you stumbled into another thing that didn't really affect you guys. It is on her, it is on her radar. Sarah is very good at what her job is, but it takes time to get those, it is on her radar, and I want to just say that, that you, it is being addressed.
Thank you, yeah, I appreciate it.
No, no problem, I, I understand, I know, I've been by there, I know what you're talking about. No, you're doing great.
Yeah, it's bad.
And I, and I wholeheartedly agree, so, but that is being taken care of, that's not what we're dealing with right now, but that, that's what we're being taken.
I find that, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're perfectly fine, and congratulations, buddy.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Laura Fowler, and I'm a property owner at 1314 Sunset. My property does not touch Douglas Street, it doesn't face Douglas Street. My proposed assessment is $21,436.29. In 2018, when I purchased the property, I also was not made aware, not included, it was not disclosed to me. $23,000 for the property. It was supposed to be an investment. Anybody in this room, raise your hand, if you'd be excited about receiving a bill for Anybody? For a street that I don't live on, a street that I don't drive on, a street that doesn't cause access to my property in any way. So, if a person working minimum wage were to try to pay for this, that is 2,956 hours of their life. That's 74 weeks, or one year and five months, for a road that I don't live on. I also didn't approve it. We're not super excited about it, if you can imagine. I've got two kids that are seniors in high school, they're going to go to college, I'd like to retire someday, my husband owns a small business, and $21,000 could mean a lot to us. Doesn't that seem like an excessive amount to charge? It's less than an acre. The property value has decreased since the time that we purchased the property. We look at the refiner, most of the property is actually an evergreen easement, we can't build on it, can't do anything permanent on it, except revote. And now make 20 annual installments with interest for the privilege of being within a block of a street in the city that we did not ask to be fixed. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I'm David Johnson, I own the property 1310 Sunset Road, and just for the record, I was the one that opposed this whole thing from the beginning, signed the petition, everything history didn't even have signatures, and I'd like to make something clear. This gentleman here said we could make installment payments, is that what he said?
Like in what regards? So, it'll go on your taxes, and it'll, it'll just automatically be 20 annual payments, including interest, of that amount, divided over 20 years. If, say you want to pay a larger chunk down, you can do that, if in year three or five, you decide to want to pay it off or make larger payments to the city, you always can do that to pay it off quicker.
Okay, so, so, I'm probably not the only one here, but how, how do we do that? So, how do we, how do we make our initial payment? We don't have much permission, guys.
Yeah, so, after, after this meeting, if the commission decides to finalize the project and spread the assessments, you all will be receiving another letter, which will give you those details and directions about payments, and how to contact us.
And we'll also have the interest rate on there at the time, so we know what we're doing.
Okay.
So, we're going to know that before we make our first payment.
Because you said it'll go in the fall, right?
The bond will be sold in the fall, we'll go ahead and put the interest, what we do is call our bond council prior and get a good, good estimate, estimate of it if people want to pay prior.
It'll show up on your statement you get from the Butler County Treasurer, your property tax statement that you get from Butler County Treasurer every year?
Yeah.
It'll be on that.
What will be on that?
This special assessment for this street.
And so, if I want to pay it off, I just go to the Butler County place and pay it off?
Yeah, you don't come here and pay it off.
Yeah, you just come to us.
Oh, you come to the city?
Yeah, if you want to. If you want to pay it off.
Yeah, I would, I would have told you different things.
Yeah, you come to us, you come, see, see me in my office.
Didn't realize that, did you?
Over there on bond. And what's your name? Scott Rickert.
Scott Rickert?
Uh huh. There'll, there'll be an address in the letter you receive of where to come and make payment if you want to pay it full, and not just have it spread on the taxes.
Well, I don't want to pay it full, but I want to pay it in four years.
Sure, sure. And you just come to us.
I want to spread my tax deduction over four years instead of taking, oh, my God! I'll be honest with you. I don't need, I don't need $4,000 tax deduction in one year, I need a thousand.
Right.
Because that's what I want to do.
What, what was your address again, address again, sir?
1310 Sunset.
1310, okay.
Yeah. Uh, and I'm like the last person, my property don't even have anything to do with the tax program.
Right.
No driveway, no access to it. You guys should, you, you guys should have talked to Evergreen and buying my building too, they bought everything around it.
Sorry.
You didn't have nothing to do with that.
Nothing, just, not my department.
Okay, well, that's all I would say. I'd like to say I opposed it from the very beginning, from the very beginning. But it doesn't give it, so.
Thank you, sir.
The gentleman just brought up Evergreen. I want to let you all know that they did buy a number of properties down there to rebuild a transmission line through. They are paying the same assessments as well. They, they aren't waiting for those assessments.
I do have one more question.
Please stand.
What, did you say the square foot cost was?
You know what, I don't know that I'd have the cost per square foot in front of me.
It's just based on square foot. It's based on square foot.
Right, we're getting that, we're getting assessed by the square foot.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, well.
Well, we'll have somebody get that out to you. He, he can look it up and find it.
We've got the information, it's just not clear.
Yeah, it's in the system. He, he can get it for you, though.
Well, okay, I just want to make sure there wasn't a state on the number of square feet on my property.
I understand.
That did happen.
Oh, I could, I could, well, what's your address?
1310.
13 Sunset Road.
Is there, I mean, it's, are any of these numbers, how many feet we have?
No.
And what do you get?
I'd, I'd let the individual property or square footage here write what is on my property.
Is that all my tax is supposed to do, the square foot?
No, that's a city thing, not a county thing, I, I believe.
If, if you, if you swing by or want to hang out, I can, I can show you your square footage.
Okay, and you don't know the exact cost per, you know?
No.
Um, the cost per square foot?
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Please come up.
My name is Robert Parker. I just flew in today from Alaska. I got your letter on the date of May 22nd. I got it last week and assigned for it, so you can see the receipt time on it. I am appalled at a $14,506 tax for the property of 1323 Douglas. I called down, and they say that's a tax on all my property. Well, I had to lose an easement of 5,443 feet. What does that do to the taxes? And most places that I've lived at, we're paying a special tax. It's on property that butts right up to what is for, like Douglas Road, which is about 60 foot that I own. So am I paying it on all my property?
You are paying on, um, the depth of your property on the north property line is 267.5.
That's all my property then? Can't you just say that?
Well, I wasn't clear on my boundaries if you went further west than that.
So why am I paying such an amount of tax on something that does not go along with the easement? I have the easement, it took that property away, so are you giving me a break on that easement? For the power line?
Yeah, the easement wasn't something that the city did.
I understand.
That, that is real property that you own, that you have granted access to.
Yeah, I'm granted it because I got better older than you do. So you take it. So that everybody here can have a good power plant. I can't see it, gentlemen and ladies. I don't mind paying my taxes. I've been paying them there at that place for 20 some years. But I can't see it this year. Not for, to me, I would say for about 60 foot of property that joins to Douglas Road. I would also like anything referencing my property sent to me when I'm paid. I don't live here. I pay my taxes, I keep my grass cut.
Sure.
And all that stuff.
The address we have is Peel Box 23034?
Exactly. So all I got is somebody to tell me I want to pay those outrageous taxes. It's like the young lady back there, $20,000 on my 14.
Anybody else like to speak?
I have some questions, I don't know if this is for Robert's.
About Douglas Road?
No, no, about something else.
No, no, this is, Douglas Road is what we're talking about right now.
Clay Conley, 1155 Douglas Road. Now it's time, wanting to, uh, on my, want to pay these taxes. Is there a way that I could pay the amount each year ahead of time? So I don't have all that to pay at the end of the year as far as the taxes go? Because I talked to somebody, I think from your office, it wasn't you. And they said I could pay part of it in July. And so it would go as long as it was in, done in July. So they can turn it in on my taxes. If I do that, do I still have a full amount of what the yearly, uh, payment deal would be if I was paid?
Twice a year, is that what you're saying?
Well, what it is, I, I pay, actually I pay once a year, but with the, uh, $10,600 some dollars that is spread over 20 years, that's going to be an extra, I don't know, $500 to $700 extra a year. And with me being on disability, I have to come up with some way of paying that extra $500 to $700 before I get the statement in July for, at the, in December. So if I pay that $500 to $700 before July, will that, each year, will that deduct the full amount of what would be added on in December?
It would just reduce your principal, so, um, I don't know that there's a way that we can work with the county to show no payment due?
Well.
If there's a remaining assessment?
Well, what I'm saying is my taxes are $1,600 some dollars a year. So here, I had this on top of that. So that's going to put my total tax, oh, anywhere from $21,000 to $2,300 a year. So if I could make, put a little extra down ahead of time, where I don't have to come up with that extra money in December, is there a way that I could do that?
I bet you could go down there and just pay that extra, like you want to do. And then at the end of the year, the county would just, you, you would, you would have to pay it because you'd already paid it.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying? I, I almost, because, I mean, I, you know, I.
We could, we could visit with the county, county.
They, they, they're very flexible over there. I mean, they, 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 they want your money, so.
This is what, this is what I was signing out.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, right. I just, I mean, it's that, 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 they're going to find a way to do it.
Because right after I got this letter, I had went up and talked to somebody over here in the office, and they said, yeah, I could do it, as long as I got it in before July, because they were turning over to the tax people.
Was it Amanda you spoke to?
Probably, it, it was a female, so.
Yep, she would know, she would, she's the one that will know.
And that, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to find out. If I could pay it, it would, you know, so I don't have too much.
I would say touch base with his office.
Okay.
And, 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 and that's a very good department over there. They'll make sure that gets you where you need to be.
Yeah, and as soon as I get the final bill, I'll come in and visit with them and go for my.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak?
I just have a simple question.
Please come up.
I want a little more clarification on what the interest rate is.
Sir, can you state your name and your address, please?
What?
Name and address.
Oh, Harvey Hoppeter, 1015 Douglas Road. Well, nobody seems like they really know what the interest rate is.
So we haven't gone out for sale and borrowed that actual money yet. So what's funded the project through its old duration is just city funds. We have gone out and borrowed money to repay this.
So we don't know what it's going to be.
When we sell in, in November, when we sell these bonds in November, we will have a set rate for a 20-year term. When we, prior to assessment, we touch base with our bond council, who does the wholesale proceedings for us? And we get a, a, a average where we think the interest is going to be. Once that bond, bond is sold, then we actually attach that interest rate to this project.
And lock it in.
Lock it in, yeah. So we won't know until six months from now, or a year, two years? Do you understand when we? Yeah, it'll be September of this year, we'll, we'll have sold the bonds, and we'll be able to communicate the actual interest rate, that would be assessed this project. But, but for folks that are interested in payoff to defer not to be liable for that interest, that letter will have what, what our bond council assumes will.
Yeah, but I know that $16,000 is going to pay off.
Sure.
Are you not on a big thing?
I understand that. If that is what we're wondering.
So when would this actually start appearing on our act?
So it will, the first will be December of 2021, that tax statement?
December of 2021. Okay. What's your, this year?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else wish to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. And entertain a motion.
Okay, is, is this the right one? Douglas Road, okay. I move to approve ordinance number G1354, levying special assessments on certain property to pay the cost of internal improvements in the city of Eldorado, Kansas, as previously authorized by Resolution Number 2872 and 2925 of the city, and providing for the collection of such special assessments.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the commission?
Um, this has been a very long project, um, and I, I do appreciate, I, looking at the numbers, I, I, I appreciate the, the sticker shock that the, the citizens are getting. I'll be honest with you, I'm, 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 this is one of those roads that, and when they brought it to us, it was so bad, and it was the, the, was it the base? Like, it was all the way down into the base, um, that, in that road, right? It was, I know, like, you could lose a doublement in some of those potholes. And it's, it, it's, it was time for that road to get done. And, and I, I don't think it was all, you know, the, the residents. Now, I think it was past residents that have kicked this project down the road. So I'm going to vote for it, and, um, I, I mean, I, I do appreciate the sticker shock, but, you know, I'm also having a little bit of sticker shock of $800,000 that we've got to fork out also, so. That's all I got to say.
Anyone else?
Right.
I don't have anything.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0. Next item on the agenda, number 15, community developed block grant public hearings for 142 North Main.
Sir, commission, I flipped it over, next one. Yes, this evening you set this as a public hearing for, um, the CDBG, Community Developed Block Grant for 142 North Main. This is the second phase of that project for improvements to the building on 142 North Main. The estimated cost for the project is $341,700. The request of the grant in the Kansas Department of Commerce, Commercial Grant Program, was, is $250,000. Of that, the remaining amount, $91,700, is being paid by the owner of the property of 142 North Main. So we're just asking you if tonight could direct the mayor to sign the contract and the city manager, complete any other documents that are associated with the process?
Would it be the mayor that signed, or the vice mayor?
Be it all signed.
You can change the motion to that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
But we have told the public hearing, correct?
Right, I just wanted to.
Okay. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? That being the case, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move to direct the vice mayor to sign the contract and to direct the vice mayor and city manager to complete any other documents associated with the grant process.
I'll second it. Do we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, 4-0. Agenda item number 16, YMCA Youth Recreation Proposal.
City Commission, uh, for the brief for discussion is the YMCA Youth Recreation Proposal. The Park Advisor Board has reviewed this matter and has recommended to deny acceptance of the proposal. We can go into the details, uh, quickly, your packet, um, but I have had conversations with Commissioner Wilkinson, and she would like to see about table the conversation for a work session, so we can have, uh, a. so we can have, uh, an additional discussion at that meeting. The reason it was moved to this meeting, uh, we were supposed to have a work session last week, and we would have had that discussion then, uh, because that was canceled, I moved it to this meeting so we can have that discussion. Uh, the YMCA and the city both would like to have some clarity on this, so we can both move forward and understand what we need to be from a budget standpoint and from a programming standpoint. And so, after consulting with Matt Eagle of the YMCA, he, he and I both agreed that we could agree before on this. But if the commission desires to table for further discussion, uh, we respect that matter, and do that probably either on the 16th or on June 21st.
Do I need to make an official motion?
Well, do we need a-
For discussion?
Would you be able to do it since it's your daughter that's pushing for this?
I, I do not benefit. There is no conflict of interest. Her job does not depend on this. They will be hiring somebody else to handle. So, no, this, this has nothing to do with my daughter.
So-
I do, however, feel like the city and Kevin and his department and Matt and the Y need to come to the city commissioner at a work session and talk to us about both sides. I think we need to hear, uh, if we do it, what does that do to our recreation department? How does our recreation department feel about it? I think there's all these open topics that need to be discussed before we go yea or nay.
But weren't all those topics discussed at the rec advisory board meeting?
Having those opportunities for those subjects to be discussed, um, I would say that the park advisory board seemed to have the information they needed to make their recommendation.
So, has anything changed since that?
The only thing that's changed, the YMCA, uh, has submitted a revised proposal, which the park advisory board also considered as well. That revised proposal, which was included in your packet, reduced their fee schedule. So, from their original proposal, they reduced their, their fees for participation. But beyond that, the proposal remains the same.
Did the park advisory board vote after the revised fee schedule?
Yes.
And voted no, correct?
Yes, correct. Although, there was probably some confusion in terms of what they were voting for or against, because the YMCA's proposal was submitted just right before the meeting, so they didn't really have a lot of time to review it. So, I think there, if you ask the board members, they'd probably say they were voting against one proposal versus the other. There was a lot of confusion. But nonetheless, they were voting against a YMCA proposal, uh, for youth recreation. But they did have the information in front of them about the revised with a reduced fee schedule.
And they still voted no.
That's correct.
And I hate to let Facebook play this out, but it was playing out on Facebook, and a lot of people in El Dorado can't afford this. Don't want to do that. And there was a lot of naying out there.
Well, I've never been on Facebook.
Yeah, it was, it was-
Been with any luck at all and never will be.
There's quite a lot of stuff that was put out on Facebook.
But, I do hang my hat and I have a lot of faith in our, all of our advisory boards. And I feel like, I did read the minutes of all of the meetings. I thought there was, they asked good questions and, uh, quite honestly, uh, four to zero vote is good enough for me.
Good enough for me, too.
Well, I can assure you, the Facebook comments that were made were made by people who did not attend the meeting. Both meetings that we held, they were going off of hearsay information because our video did not get the presentation out to the public-
We know what that's like.
As we had planned. So, you know, technology got in the way. My, my only concern, I want to know how a proposal like this is going to affect our rec department. And we never talked about that. That was never a discussion. If, if, if we allow an outside agency to take over, what happens to the rec part of the Parks and Rec Department? I want to know that.
Well, that's a thus conversation.
Because I have made the comment, and you've heard me since I came on, that the Parks and Rec Department is woefully underfunded and woefully understaffed. And I've said that for six years. And, and I want to know what we are going to do to help them. Am I saying that the Y proposal is an answer? Maybe, maybe not. But there is a need within our rec department to be able to offer more opportunities to our kids that our woefully understaffed rec people can offer. I'm sure Kevin has ideas out to yin yang on things he'd like to do for the kids in our community. But he doesn't have a budget to do it. He doesn't have a staff to do it. If we want what is a really Parks and Rec commission, then we need to spend the time and the money and let him have a Parks and Rec commission. The way it should be done. Whether that means we create a, uh, a partnership between the Y and the city to pull this off, whether we look at the possibility of a partnership between the school district, the Y and the city, I don't know. But I think we, as commissioners, have to sit and discuss this to see what we can do for the kids of El Dorado. That's where I'm coming from. I think there is more to this than just saying no to the Y or no to the city. I think this is an opportunity that we have to come together, work together, and have something bigger and better. We keep adding parks to Kevin's park part of the, that's hard to say, parks part, part of the Parks and Rec. And we're not giving him anything to add to the rec part, except we grinch and complain and gripe about the concession stands and et cetera and so on. We need to address this issue. And sitting here at a commission meeting is not the way to do it. We need to actually sit down. We need to do like we do in work sessions. We get those ideas out. We ask Kevin questions. We ask Matt from the Y questions. If we want additional information, we, David, this is what I want, you know, how soon can you get it? This is something important. David will tell you that his important things are making sure you have water, making sure you have a fire department, and making sure that you have a police department. Those are the things that David worries about, making sure we can fund and get those to the people.
And streets.
Parks and Rec, for six years, I've said this, the bottom of the totem pole. That's not fair to our kids. And we need to talk this out. We need to figure out a way to help, one way or the other, however it may be, or think outside the box, heaven forbid, and come up with something that involves everybody. I would like to see this tabled until we can actually have a work session. And if the Parks and Rec Advisory Board wants to be, be involved, great, bring them on. I was there. They had comments to make. They had concerns. And I believe they should be there to make those. I don't think this is something we just blow off. I'll step off my soapbox.
I don't feel taking the Park and Rec Board's recommendation is blowing it off.
Well, and I wanted to ask Lauren a question real quick, if you mind coming up, Lauren. I, I know you, you've been on that, that commission or that committee. Where do you live?
401 North Brazos, El Dorado.
Is there a proposal that the Y brought to you, if, is there a proposal the Y can bring to you to get that 40 reversed?
In my opinion, the Y proposal doesn't do anything to better the situation for El Dorado's athletes. It, and let's talk money. If we're talking money, that this proposal would take money out of El Dorado and take it out of the El Dorado Rec Department and put it into Y. We, we had three advisory, I mean, we've had this same proposal, well, warmed over, three times. Every year we look at it. Every year we have open discussion at the, um, bit, the-
Civic Center.
Right. We have people, they, this year we had a nice printout that showed what percentage of people wanted to leave their kids in the Y program and what wanted to put it in the rec program. It, it says right on the back page of that thing that over 50% of the people polled want to leave their kids in the rec. There is all kinds of information about too much money. Now, if this, to me, this whole thing, number one, it doesn't help El Dorado's youth, and number two, it's a money machine. You know, why would they have two different rates, one for a Y member, one for a non-member? Now, if that's not an incentive to get more Y members, you know, I don't, uh-
And then, then just quick, they did change that, that, that fee-
They lowered it.
But, and I'm, I'm just wondering, and how to, you know, like, so that, that's kind of-
Right, they lowered it, and I got my copy of it, and it was walking into me.
I understand that, I-
And, uh, but at the same time, the overall thing, uh, what the Park and Rec Board did was we voted to reject the Y's offer and to have to, have the rec department go ahead and do like they have been. And if the Y wants to fund their own and have their own, they can do it. We don't, we're not telling them they can't help. But it just, there's, I think we've talked about this so many times and so many, it's, you know, if every time they come back, they just tweak one little piece and find out where the, you know, where the, the barometer is, what, what El Dorado can afford, what El Dorado won't afford. But it, the bottom line, El Dorado's youth isn't, in my opinion, going to be any better at all if the Y takes over basketball, flag football, soccer, everything else. It, uh, we have a tremendous Y group, I mean, a rec program right now. We have people who have grown up with these kids. The kids know Kevin. The kids know Don. Brian Hurd. They know all these people. They have, the kids have respect for these people. So, how can you go out and buy somebody on the open market to bring in here, plug in, and tell them they're gonna do a better than Don, Don or Kevin or Brian can do it?
Again, I want to go right back to my first question. Is there a proposal that they could make that you would vote yes to?
If there was a proposal that they would like to look into sharing, El Dorado Rec Department, Matt Rutherford to come in and kick it down, they're, they, they want to take over.
Well, and it, and it, because, because the reason I'm asking this is because Kendra is talking of a, an, you know, kind of a complete overhaul of what that, that is. And I'm just wondering, you know, and, and I have two commissioners here that do value, you know, that stated that they va, they value what that vote was. So, I'm trying to see if there's any future in this at all. If they, if, if we can, if they can come and work with you to get a yes from you, if you're telling me, no, I think it should stay this way, then I'm, then that, that, that changes what the dynamic up here is. But if you're saying that, if there is an opportunity for you to work with them to get an overall solution, as Kendra said, then that, that changes, you know, it comes back and forth.
And, and that possibility of, of, of working together is not going to be something that just happens right now.
I get it.
I mean, that's gonna take time to get input and all that, so it's not like-
I'm just, I'm looking, I mean, but I'm looking to, to the, a man that's been, been part of the Parks and Rec for-
I just-
I can, I can make a joke, but I'm not going to. Um, that, you know, that, that's been part of that committee, so I'm, I'm trying to, and if you're saying, I, I, I understand what you're saying with it, and I know where you're going with it, so. I'm, I'm okay with tabling it to have a, 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 a deeper conversation. I'm, I, I don't want to go against them. I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go against the planning commission. What I'm saying is, is that I would, I would like to have the conver-
Parks and Rec Commission, not planning.
Thank you. I would like to have that, I would like to have that overall bigger conversation, personally.
Any other questions?
No, thank you, Lauren. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I kind of feel like if we ask another committee and change what they want to done, we're gonna lose more people that go to these committees, just like we lost in the planning commission. They're gonna say, why are we even here if you're gonna change it?
That's a Kendra's point, if, if we can, if we can make it better by working with the Y and have, and work that committee-
And you'd still be going against the recommendation at the Y?
Not if they're part of the process.
But, what, to me, what they want, what we are to vote on tonight is the proposal that they brought. Not to go back, the proposal that they brought is unacceptable to our rec committee.
Correct.
So, to me, we need to have a vote to reject the proposal that they've brought. If they want to try again, let them try again. But the way they've structured it and brought it to us, from what I understand from our rec advisory board, Parks and Rec is unacceptable.
Okay. Is that your recommendation? I'll second it.
I'll make that a motion, but, yeah.
Okay, so we've got a motion to reject? Is that, is that what-
I will formally make the motion to reject the Y's proposal.
I'll second it.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I will go along with the fact that rejecting this proposal, but I would like to, I would like it to be added to an agenda item at a work session at a later date with the Y. Okay, I mean, I, I think that's just what I, I, and it takes three of us to, to prove that, but I'm just saying, like, I, I, I will vote to reject the proposal now as, as, as proposed, but I, I would like it to be readdressed at a work session with the commission to give everybody kind of a, this is what we would like to see as a group.
At a later date.
At a later date.
After our budget, after we get our budget in.
But that doesn't entail amending the motion, correct?
I'm sorry, I had to go get something for David. I missed the conversation.
I'm just gonna wing it and say no.
Right, fine.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, three to one. Agenda item number 17, bid approval for Project 588, a 12-inch waterline replacement, Boyer Road.
Mr. Commission, we had a, um, we've had a number of issues with this- Mr. Commissioner, we had a, we've had a number of issues with this section of waterline along Boyer Road between Third Avenue and Central Avenue over the last five years. So we're asking tonight to consider awarding a bid to Noawaf Construction of $49,720 to replace 510 feet of 12-inch ductile iron pipe. We're planning on replacing that with HDP pipe with the same diameter 12.
Are you talking just the intersection of Third and Boyer?
Um, it will begin there and then head south 510 feet.
So that becomes the blue line?
You know, mine's a black and white.
Yes, it's blue.
The end of the repair will be about where the bridge is underneath Boyer Road.
Basically, it follows the gas line.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
The gas line's yellow.
Yes.
We, we already have, so we're already in there?
We are already in there. We have a 12-inch line which provides a loop to that area of town. Like I said, we've had five weeks on this over the last five years. Most recent was within the last month. We had a section of the pipe, the sidewalk blew out. The soils in that area seem to be corrosive or deteriorating the pipe quickly. So we need to get that out and get a, get a polyethylene pipe in there that resists.
That's a big leak on a 12-inch pipe. That's a lot of water.
If it was that, that I think they were struggling trying to find where the water was leaking, all we could, all they could tell is we were losing water out of town really quick.
Does this line feed the industrial park and all that land? Does, is this part of that system going over where Mears is and all of that?
No, the city does not provide water over there.
We don't?
For Mears, that is a rural district.
Okay.
We are very well situated out in this area where we're able to shut this line off without affecting customers or see any service change. It's just a continuation of the loop of, you want your water lines looped together so you have water constantly moving through your system.
Any other questions? Entertainer motion?
A move that since Norwalk has submitted the lowest and best bid of $49,720 for project number 588, the city manager be directed to award the bid to said contractor, providing as the company furnish the proper bonds.
Sorry.
The motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, 4-0. Agenda item number 18, budget process presentation.
So I'm going to try not to take a lot of time, but since we missed the last work session, I want to get this topic in front of you now, beginning, sooner or later, so you guys can start thinking about it, because it will be something that we will need to talk about as part of the budget process. The state legislature changed the budget law this year, and when they did so, they made it effective for this budget cycle. So we have a new process that is somewhat cumbersome, somewhat complicated, and so I want to get that in front of you so we can kind of talk about it. It does lengthen the process a little bit, so that's, that's good to that, to that degree. So last week, we were going to have that work session, so we would review the process at that point in time. We didn't do that, so we're going to do it today, and then we'll move forward from there. So on June 15th, per the state statute, the new state statute, the county clerk is to provide the city with what is called the revenue neutral rate. So what that really means is they're going to give us a number that will tell us the amount of taxes that were generated last year. So that will be a number that, in essence, what the legislature is going to try to do is they're going to say you can raise taxes infinitely if you want, but to do so, the commission is going to vote to approve any increase above the revenue neutral rate. So you have last year's taxes, and then any increase in valuation, whether that be the normal annual, you know, 2% or 3% that you get from the county appraisal's office, or whether it be a big project like a BG Products coming on the tax rules, any increase to the aggregate valuation of the city, you have to either vote to accept that as part of the, as part of the new revenue coming in, or you have to lower the overall taxes. So again, you've got this revenue neutral rate. So all things being equal, your mill levy has to go down to equal the same amount of revenue, or if you want to accept that new assessed valuation, you vote to increase the mill levy rate. So what this, what does?
But if the valuation goes up, you don't have to increase the mill levy.
No, you will.
You will?
In this case. So this whole process kind of removes the mill levy from, from the equation. So all the state wants us to do is they want us to focus on the total amount of taxes that the city's going to levy. So let's say that the city said last year we levied $5 million dollars with the taxes, okay? The mill levy's over here, maybe we're not that far now. So last year it's $5 million, and this year it's $5 million, but we have a project coming on the rolls, so that means that instead of $5 million, it's going to be $5.5 million, okay? So that valuation goes up, but in order to generate the same amount of taxes, the county is going to do some magic over here, they're going to reduce your mill levy by the scenes to make that equal the same amount of revenue you had before.
Unless we vote to accept that.
That's correct. Exactly.
Okay.
So they do a revenue neutral rate on June 15th, and then what that does is that kind of starts the process. The city will then, we will present the mill levy supported funds to the city commission on June 28th, beginning on June 28th. And so that way we can kind of see, you guys can kind of see, okay, this is what we're raising revenue, this is what we're trying to spend, like we normally do, with the goal of kind of figuring out, okay, where do you want that, that total aggregate tax rate or tax dollar amount to be? Because then what we have to do is the city commission will have to approve a resolution of intent if you'd like to go up. If you don't want to go up, then you don't have to do that. But most places are actually recommending that a commission do the resolution of intent to increase the revenue neutral rate, because if, at the end of this process, the commission or the county, the county treasurer's office has to adjust and increase the amount of funding coming in based upon the actual assessed valuation, and that's higher than the total amount that was generated last year, then the city has to remade that one back to taxpayers per the state statute. So to err on the side of conservatism, you pass a resolution of intent, and then, it's kind of like in years past, we would do a notice of public hearing, you could always, you couldn't exceed that once you published it, but you could always go down from there. So it's kind of like that. Kind of err on the side, give it a benefit of the doubt, and then if it comes in less than that, then we don't have to rebate any taxes. So once they have that resolution of intent, then what they do is they will prepare a tax statement. And I don't believe that's on here. That's not because that's not a process we do. So the county will actually prepare a tax statement that is going to go to every single property tax owner in the city limits. Incidentally, everyone in the county will actually get one, but the post in the city will get one that will apply to, they will get a tax statement that will show them the resolution of intent for the city, the county, the school district, the college, yeah, any entity that's going to increase their mill levy. Furthermore, it will be applicable to their specific property. So if last year your taxes in your house, your property taxes were $1,500, you're going to get a statement that shows that the city's going to raise it to $1,700, and the school district is going to raise it another 90 bucks, and, you know, so they're going to see that. They're also going to see as part of this notice the date under which the city commission and each of these other tax entities are going to hold their public hearing. So the intent of this is the city, the legislature wants every property owner to be appraised of what their taxes are going to do, going to go up, and if some, how much, how that directly affect their properties, and then two, what date can they come to the hearing to voice their concerns about that increase? So the county will get those statements prepared, they will mail them out. In some cases, property owners will receive more than one statement, because if you own more than one property, you'll get a statement for every single property that you own, you'll get that notice. And then the city, as in prior years, you'll have to also pass a notice of publication in the newspaper for your budget hearing, and then we'll have a budget hearing and go through that process as much as we would. So the, the big part of the change is at the front end where we have to go through this process and determine, we get the revenue neutral rate, and then we determine if we are going to, we intend to increase that rate, and then we send that to the county by July so that we can make and get those publications made and used for the public. So in order to keep us on that track, on June 28th, we will review the mill levy supported funds, because our mill levy will be based on the general fund, the airport fund, the bond interest fund, and the library fund, and I believe that's all. So those funds, we'll go over all those, and then we'll kind of get a sense from you all whether you are kind of thinking at that point in time whether you are intending to go up or not. Then on July 5th, we will have a budget work session to discuss, again, those mill levy supported funds. On July 5th, on July 12th, we'll have a budget work session in our special meeting, and that will primarily be to adopt those of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate, if that's the direction you guys want to go, so we can get that to the county in time to meet their essential deadline. And then after that, the mill levy supported funds are basically going to hold temporarily, and we'll dive into the enterprise funds, and then we'll have a couple more work sessions to kind of finish up everything. August 24th, we'll have the publication of the notice of budget hearing, which will be in the paper. And then on September 6th, we will have a city commission meeting with the intent of having a budget hearing and adopting the 2022 budget. And then September 20th, we will get a certified copy to the county clerk for next year's budget. So in a normal, probably here, in the past, the certified budget had to be completed into the county by August 25th. This year, we have until September 20th to get that done and wrapped up and completed so that those can be then assessed to the taxpayers.
But we got a lot more stuff to do.
You what?
But we got a lot more stuff to do.
That's right. So what I'm going to do in this next slide is just kind of give you a meat and potatoes example of how this revenue neutral rate is supposed to work. So in the prior year, so last year in this case, and these are roughly, they're rough numbers, but that'll just give you an illustration of us. In the prior year, the assessed valuation is $93.1 million. That generated, basically, mill levy and aggregate property taxes of $4.9 million. So if you owned a $200,000 house in this scenario at 53 mils, that's $1,220 that you'll pay in property taxes. So in this scenario, what happens when the assessed valuation increases 5%? Now, when I say 5%, I mean in aggregate 5%, so that's the entire city. So it goes from $93.1 million to $98 million. So when we do that, we have two scenarios. We have the revenue neutral rate, which the mill levy would decrease to raise the same amount of taxes. So your $200,000 house is now equal to $210,000. So your mill levy goes from 53 mils to 50.5 mils to generate $1,220, as you can see there in the slide. That incidentally generates $4.9 million to aggregate. So that's what they're aiming for with the revenue neutral rate. The second scenario is the revenue positive rate, which would be if we wanted to absorb the 5% increase in assessed valuation, that means our mill levy would have to increase to absorb that assessed valuation. So your $210,000 house at 53 mils would generate $1,280 instead of the $1,220. So then instead of $4.9 million as a whole, the city would have $5.2 million in property taxes. So that's, that's kind of difference. So if the city commission said we intend to go up, we're going to absorb 5%, then I as a property tax, as a property owner, would get a notice that says, your $210,000 house, your taxes will go from $1,220 to $1,280. The commission's intending to do this, and the public hearing will be September 6th at 6:30 at City Hall. So that's kind of what the legislature is intending for this, how this to work in practice. This is the first year that this is going to be done. The counties don't exactly know how they're going to assemble the information, first of all, on the manner that people will stand, and secondly, in the timeframe that meets the statute requirements. So it will be kind of interesting to see how that one goes down. But we are rooting for on a track that meets these statutory requirements and provides these, these examples for you all to think about. So to that, to that note, and I understand this is kind of complicated, so we will probably come back and discuss this as well, but just some things to begin to think about for future conversation. Does the city commission prefer to remain at the revenue neutral rate, or is the city commission be able to at revenue positive rate? Meaning if we do go up, and we do know for a fact that BG Products, their first project comes on the tax rules, and so in one case, because that's coming on the tax rules, you could reduce that and reduce the taxes for everyone, which is one of the benefits that you could have with expanding the tax base. Alternatively, doing an economic home project with BG Products, increase the tax base, which means all things being equal, you could also generate more revenue as well. So at some point, the commission will have to give some feedback to this, to staff on what they prefer to do with respect to, to that. The second point is what are the key priorities the city commission wants to focus on during the development of the 2022 budget? That's always a question that's important to kind of think about. And then are there any policy changes the commission wants to consider that may affect the proposed 2022 budget? Because those obviously, like, for example, any changes to recreation programming, whether that be a recognition or a mill levy increase, that would need to be included as part of that discussion, because if we do want to do that, we'll have to know that for the notice of intent to increase the revenue neutral rate. So those are just some things I want to just get in front of your minds so you can start thinking about it. And then our next meeting, we'll really start to break this down and give you some examples of what that looks like, and hopefully we can make it so you can understand what we're trying to do, what the legislature is trying to do. I think the key thing, in the past, with the increased valuation, cities can say, well, we didn't increase your taxes because we kept the mill levy the same. So it wasn't us, it was, it was the county, they increased the valuation, and I think the legislature was like, but that's not true, you did raise the taxes because you generated more money, so we're going to create this process, we're like, you have to vote on it. And so that's, in essence, what this does.
So you said something about the city doing that and the county doing it, but then you also said the school districts and, and the community college, they have to do this neutral rate?
Yes. Yes, so every local taxing entity has to follow the revenue neutral rate process as part of their budget process for the September year. So any, any entity that is a taxing entity that raises property taxes would have to comply with this process as well.
What about the library board?
The library board is actually incorporated, in fact, that was the other one, I couldn't remember, it's, so they're actually incorporated into our budget by default. So we have the general fund, the airport fund, bond interest fund, the library fund, and the, I can't remember.
Public works?
Airport. Airport.
Okay.
So those are the five that comprise our, our mill levy, and then everybody else. So when you get your property tax bill, those taxing entities are included on there.
They're itemized.
Right, they're itemized, and so they, so your actual statement will probably be several pages long. If you have one property, if you have multiple properties, it can be even longer than that. So, because each, each taxing entity will have their own statement expressing the impact of their proposed increase to your specific property.
But the state's going to reimburse them all for all that postage and everything, right?
No, we actually, we actually have to pay that as well. So the cost of preparing the notice as well as a. So, the cost of preparing the notice as well as, as, uh, print or not printing, postage has to be borne by the local entities.
Sure.
So, in the event that, let's say, of the local entities, two of them are gonna increase their mill levy theoretically, then that would be divided between those and, and that, that cost would be shared by the classes. So, the county has to pay for the printing costs by state law, but they can distribute it out from the local entities that are participating in the process.
And what exactly is it that the legislature is wanting to see from changing the budget this way?
They want to be re-elected.
So, um...
That was a stupid question, wasn't it?
You will recall that last year, or the last couple of years, we, we, the thing that's kind of been the center point of the budget is the property tax lit. So, that property tax lit was based on, a formula was created and basically said you can't exceed this number, um, in your general fund, except for some exceptions that they made on the side. So, the, the cities have been advocating to do that. There was a couple of, uh, legislators that actually found a model. This model is actually built off of the way they did this in Utah. And I think the intent is, we will, the statement is, they said, we will give up the property tax lit. But to do that, you have to follow this process and basically be held accountable for a tax increase that you may once propose. So, there's no tax lit, cities, you can raise taxes infinitely if you like, but you're gonna have to have this process. Taxpayers are gonna generally tap out if that's their property individually. Their property is shelved in probes at your public hearing, and then you're gonna have to vote to actually accept that, that budget, uh, when you're all done. I'll send it out. So, I think that was the intent.
Clear as mud.
Utah, huh?
Utah. Incidentally, in Utah, the, uh, what you get in Utah is like a receipt, like in the mail, and the receipt tells you, you know, you paid this much to the city, you paid this much to the school district, you paid this much to the county. It's, it's just a very simple piece of paper. I think they tried to get to that here in Kansas, but because of the widespread of things, and because this is our first year, I don't think you're gonna get a nice little piece of paper. Originally, it was supposed to be a postcard, but, you know, I talked to Will Johnson at the county, he's like, it's probably gonna be like an eleven-page document.
For one property?
For one property. Yeah.
And they have to cover the cost of the printing?
U.S. taxpayers will as well because we ultimately pay county taxes as well. So, that's the new budget process we have to work on here. So, should be thinking about that and, uh, whatever.
You done?
I'm done.
Good. Jim died, I'm twenty. City Commission and Advisory Board Updates. I don't care who goes first.
I don't have anything to report.
I'll start. Uh, the rec, uh, board met, and you've already heard about the Y proposal. Uh, under Kevin's, uh, report, uh, baseball, softball, T-ball, age, four hundred and twenty-eight. Do you have more now?
He's a coach.
Okay. Four hundred and thirty kids playing T-ball. Uh, he's working on a tennis camp because we, we have all those new tennis courts. Uh, eighteen lifeguards. And I have a note that says seventy young people.
Total staff hired.
Total staff hired, okay. So, Parks and Rec has hired seventy young people for this summer for the trimming and the mowing and the whatever. I just...
Very good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And eighteen of those lifeguards, how many are new?
Twelve.
Twelve are new. Six of them are returning.
Actually, we have seventeen.
Oh, seventeen, okay.
We lost one.
So, so that was a concern as to whether we'd have enough, you know, qualified, and so, we're good. Uh, the pool and splash pads have opened. Um, the July fourth celebration is actually, fireworks are going to be done on July third, which is a Saturday, at Mac Stadium. Uh, there was to be a Broncos game, but as you know, they were unable, uh, to field a team for this summer. But I understand we're working on something. We're gonna have Lauren Anthony and his crew out there.
Yeah.
Against some other team that we put together.
City band.
There you go, city band.
Sound good to me.
Lauren Anthony.
Your coach, Lauren.
Where are we, where are we playing?
Mac Stadium.
Baseball.
Oh, yeah, bet.
Slow pitch, maybe.
Donkey baseball.
Donkey baseball.
Do I even want to step into that one? Oh, that was bad. Okay, moving on, uh, they are working on the hundred and fiftieth celebration. They will be having activities going on this summer, uh, when everybody else gets together. And I think that was it for Kevin's paperwork.
Next?
Um, I don't have anything to talk about my advisory boards. I've got a couple of things. How much storm damage did we have in the city parks? Did we have much lens?
Not as bad as some storms. We had plenty.
Okay. Um, that was a, it was a concern of someone that called me. Um, I, I didn't, didn't...
We didn't, we lost a tree in the cemetery, we lost a rain in the same park.
Okay. Um, and speaking of cemetery, I, I, I just wanted, I wanted, we got an email saying that we figured out some, the north side or south side of Sunset Cemetery, that that's, that we're, we, budget money, that we're, we're gonna be able to take care of that?
Yeah, we, we figured out a plan to do that project without requiring excess sales tax dollars. So, yeah, we will present that here soon.
I just wanted that to be spoken into the universe, so, um...
But we're, we still had voted on that, right?
No.
No, yeah.
No, I mean, on the excess sales tax.
Correct, yeah.
I mean, we could still use excess sales tax money.
It, it's just that they're...
But it's gonna happen either way.
That, that's what I was, that was the email that we had got, was, it was...
When we had the conversation the other night, we had just been, been the traffic way and its proximity to the cemetery and the great price per ton we got. And then hearing the discussion of the excess sales tax, a staff and David got together and figured out a way we can go ahead and try to get that done this summer.
Economically, uh, with the, okay. Excellent, thank you for that, guys. I, I know that that was kind of contentious with some of the elderly citizens. I know right now, planning commission, we're operating with two down. Do we have, do we have applications?
We have one application, um, and I just haven't talked to David about how we wanna do that now. I guess we'll look at your work session and conversation here.
Oh, okay. I just, I, I was just curious, 'cause I, I watched the meeting and, I mean, everything, of course, it was all five oh, but it just, I think a few more voices within that group were, and we're down two voices, I just, um...
I think they just have two others absent. They have nine. There's nine...
Oh, there's nine? There's always two people missing? I always see, I always see seven. Yeah, everybody's absent on different ways. Um, and then the, the other thing that, that, and it's, I, I was going through a list of things through the communications you've given us, David, that rural, Central County Rural Water District that was, we were talking to, um, half a million gallons a day. What is our, what is our, what do we have excess right now, million?
We have ten million gallons of excess.
That we've already activated?
No, that's not activated yet. We have a million left, it's not, we have a million that's been activated, ten million that's not been activated.
Correct, right, and I'm, I'm trying to, I'm, so I, I guess, since we're talking budget, um, within, over the next few months, do we need to be concerned about activating more?
Um, Springs Day, they're not Springs Day anymore. Baker Tilly is doing an analysis for us, and when they're done with that, we will be presenting those numbers to you all to talk about activating additional space and how much of a cost and what will, you know, what a rate will need to look like to pay for that. So, that's in the works right now.
Do you feel that there's a need coming to activate more? I, I get, I mean, whether we get, we get a, we, we recruit a large water user or not, we're gonna have to activate more, I understand. I'm just thinking of just the general, if, if we pick up another, I mean, are we, are you comfortable having a half a million buff, half a million gallon buffer rather than a million?
Well, activating is, is really simple. We just call the court, it's just a paper thing they, they do.
But we have to pay for it.
Right. And so, then we just start paying.
And it's a budget number. That, that's why I'm trying to, I, I just wanted, I, I'm, there was a list of things that budget-wise that I want to put, bring up for budget, and this was one of them, and I just wanted to know before I started.
Yeah, so the, because it's a water fund, it's a little bit different than, like, the general fund, we don't have to necessarily, we can do things kind of outside of the budget process. Um, so, right now, I don't think, we, we're necessarily concerned about adding additional capacity in terms of activating space. We can do that on a dime, and then if we need to, we can come back and say, we need to activate space, it's gonna cost this much money per thousand gallons, or whatever the case may be. We can kind of do that as we need to.
Okay.
Yep.
And one last thing, you said you had a question, ma'am, and I think you missed your part where you got to ask your questions.
Yes.
So, I mean, can we, do you guys mind if we let her come up?
Absolutely not.
She, she missed the public comments.
Oh, okay.
Please, please come on up and...
And I don't know about asking the right people. It's about El Dorado fence laws. Okay? Him.
His, his department.
His department. All right, and then I was also reading, I live in an older part of town.
It's all old.
Pardon?
It's all, though, town's old.
Well, but this one, they reduce the setbacks on houses plat after, if they were built after nineteen fifty-one.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, generally, yes.
What did they reduce it to?
I, I'd have to look at your specific property and go through that with you.
Okay.
And it's, it's, it varies so much between zoning districts and, and like you mentioned, when your lot, lot was platted versus the size.
When my lot was platted, the whole area was monkey. They were not like, uh, my home would be at my total lot, the neighbor's garage would be in my plat.
Oh, good.
And if you look at the plats on the computer, you can see that even. I took a boundary survey up to the mapping department, and they're going to send me a new copy because all the plats were off. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
If, if you have a concern about those things, his department would be more than happy to help you.
So, and I don't mean to bother you?
And I'm not trying to say that you're, you're bothering us in any way, but I'm just saying...
I'm just, I'm just saying, I can't give you a direct answer tonight and maybe what you have without sitting down with you and talking about your unique circumstance.
I would love to do that. Can I call you?
You just call three-two-one-nine-one-hundred.
Right. Extended in one fifty-three, right? Okay. Okay, I'll do that.
Ma'am, could I get your name and address for a minute?
Susan Drony. Eleven-fourteen South Emporia Street, Old Heart Account.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, sir, most would be available, um...
Just call in the morning and we can get some.
In the morning? Okay, got it. Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm done.
Greg, anything?
I don't have anything.
Uh, the only thing I was gonna, last week, um, had, uh, got a call from Animal Control. Uh, one of our tenants of the company I work for had a dog, had two dogs. One was out of the fence, one was, uh, tied up in the back, or not tied, but was in a open little kennel, no shade, no water. Uh, Jay came out. Actually, the dog that was loose actually put it up, which he didn't have to do. And called, found out, found out the owner of the record, which was us, called the office, of course, they called me, and I went out and met him. And I just wanted to commend him. Uh, he was very professional. We got ahold of the owner, and Jay explained to him, you know, what the deal was. Found out the animals weren't licensed, you know, said he, and wrote it all out for him. But anyway, he did a great job. So, but that also, every year, when it starts getting up into the eighties, nineties, people when you're out around, if you see animals that are out, I mean, this, this, this guy did, he didn't do it on purpose, I mean, he just didn't think, but you see an animal out with no shade or, or water and can't get to it, let, I mean, call, let Animal Control know, 'cause he ain't gonna go down and take the guy's dog. I mean, if he can't get ahold of him, or the dog's in distress, maybe he might, I don't know. But he, he obviously cares greatly for the animals, and that's what he wants. He wants what's best for the animals. So, if you see that, don't hesitate to report it. So, that's all I got.
I wanted, I wanted, I agreed. We were very, we're very lucky to have Jay in that position.
Absolutely.
He, he does, and every time anybody talks about Jay, it's, it's nothing but praise. So...
If you don't like Jay, there's something wrong with you.
Yeah.
Okay. City manager report.
I just have a few things I wrote quickly. Um, so, sales tax receipts from May came in, two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-nineteen dollars, which is the highest monthly collection on record. We've never brought in that much in a month ever. So, this is, um, May collections from March sales, so they're two months behind. So, um, year-to-date, the city's brought in one point one-nine million dollars, which is ten point four percent more than the same period a year ago, so last year...
Which was a record year, right, right.
If this trend continues, we'll have broken the record four consecutive years in a row, not that we're counting. Um, so, we appreciate everybody shopping local, 'cause all those dollars can be invested back in the community in some form or another. Let's see. KDHE recently inspected the Public Utilities Department's sanitary sewer operations. I think it's important for you guys to know, as well as the, uh, public to know, that the inspection, they do the inspection in terms of compliance with the Kansas Water Push and Control and National Polite Discharge Elimination System permit, basically make sure we're in regulatory compliance. Needless to say, they, they didn't find any issues, and they further wrote that, quote, "The wastewater treatment facility should be commended on the excellent stewardship of not only the facility and grounds, but also the wastewater treatment processes they perform at the wastewater treatment facility." It's important for folks to know that our, our people do a really good job doing what they need to do, you know, treat wastewater or treat water, or whatever the case may be. That's just one sentence of many that's included in the report where they're commending that department for their, uh, operation of that plant. Incidentally, the water plant will be inspected here coming up in the next few months, I believe, so hopefully we'll have the same kind of, uh, report as well. Also included in last week's report, uh, I was, I threw out a recommendation, uh, so I wanted to get some feedback on that. Recommending moving work sessions to five P.M. on the Monday, on Mondays of regular meetings. Um, and that way, we can, especially as we enter budget season, we can make sure we have everybody attending. And it, um, let's see, and it also just makes it so we have one meeting as opposed to a couple meetings a month. Uh, so I wanted to run that by and see what people's thoughts were. If it's a good idea, we can implement it with the June twenty-first meeting. If not, we can just continue as we've been doing on the, uh, sixteenth, which is a Wednesday, and then have the twenty, twenty-first be our regular meeting. So I don't know what people's thoughts are on that. More quick?
I'm flexible either way.
I could do that. At least we wouldn't have any more three-hour work sessions.
Yeah. The other thing I will tell you is that we will feed you as well, because that's kind of.
Bribery. Bribery.
Well, I'm sound along here. It's just, it's a risk of dismatter. It's a risk of dismatter.
On a public meeting, we're talking about bribery? Wow!
As a risk of moving with the commission. Right.
Ugh.
Karen?
I don't like Mondays. I don't. I mean, we have some interesting work sessions. And we couldn't have those interesting work sessions.
Why?
For an hour and 15 minutes?
Yeah. Why?
We'll just have to take the niceties out of the beginning.
I guess my question would be, is there another night besides Wednesday that would work for people?
We don't have Bill here to help with that, could talk. Because he's one-fifth of us.
So we can.
When's he get back?
He gets back on the 14th.
Should we do one more Wednesday and then fuss it out?
I can't do Wednesdays, but.
Doesn't work.
Don't, I mean, if Wednesday works for everybody else, then don't move it on my account.
Talk to Bill.
Okay.
See what he says.
And the last thing that I need to ask you all real quickly. So with the 150th coming up, we're going to have a concert downtown. And the city, as the, as, because that's our event, we'll be having the alcohol permit for that area, right? We have been approached by a local business that would like to know, the business would like to sell alcohol during the event. And we explained that that would, they'd have to fall under our permit, is that correct?
Well, that's a good, they're on.
My understanding is they would, they would have a permit, but I think it falls under somehow. I'm not exactly sure. It's part of the new alcohol rules, and I don't understand them all yet. This was news to me that they could actually even do this.
Because I believe our permit is like a geographic boundary, is that correct? So they want to serve alcohol within that geographic boundary, and so consequently, they would fall underneath our permit and, and. So we need to ask if you were willing to look at that as an opportunity, or if you want to say, no, it's just going to be the city that's going to be. So I believe we are planning to sell beer, and I believe that this party wants to sell liquor, is that correct?
I, I don't know that for sure. It's possible that, I, I believe that's what they want to do. Our plan had been to sell beer. We were going to sell it in cans or the aluminum bottles, for easy cleanup and, and easy monitoring. We are committed to sell a certain amount of beer because the brewery is making us a beer for the 150th, and it's only good for a certain amount of time. So we, we are committed to sell that for them, not for them for us, because we have to do it, but.
How much beer do we have to sell?
I don't remember the number off the top of my head.
So it's a kegs? We have a certain amount of kegs?
No.
Oh, well, that's right. They're bottling, aren't they? That's right.
And then, I mean, we are offering other beer that night as well. Our hope, I mean, our plan for the 150th is that as the concerts go, the last one is, I think, at 9:00. So I mean, we'll be wrapped up, and these businesses can, I mean, our, our hope is that they open and, and do some celebrating of their own after-origins, but he, he just approached us and asked if he could do this.
It's a local, local business?
Yes.
I say don't be stingy, let them do it.
Problem.
Karen? I think it's land.
Okay.
I know, we adjourned.
Sorry.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.